We call this meeting to orders. It's a city council business meeting. It's Wednesday, 6:00 PM, November 5th, 2025. Please stand for the pledge of the flag. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Murray?
Present.
Councilmember Middleton is walking up the stairs. Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Councilmember Rathmell?
Present.
Councilmember Madavatsky?
Present.
Council President Don Dennis Absinthe, Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can move on to approval of the minutes. Anyone who want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We can move to reports from committees and appointments. Does anyone have anything to report from any committee?
Oh, hello. I'm just pulling up the date of our next traffic board meeting. I believe it's Thursday, November 13th at 9:15 AM right here in council chambers. And a reminder to the public that there is public comment relating to traffic board issues at that meeting if you'd like to come and talk directly to traffic board. I am, I was trying to get an organized special rules meeting for this week, but it didn't happen. So now I'm looking at Thursday, the 13th. I'm going to try and schedule out with the other members of the committee. So follow along online to see when that is posted for, but some point hopefully on the 13th. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we can move on. We don't have any public hearings to set tonight. We don't have any public hearings, so we can move on to public comments. So residents wishing to submit a couple of public comment may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting to clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov or in person during the meeting. And if you want to come down and make a comment, you're more than welcome to. Welcome. Please state your name and whether you live or work in the city of Binghamton. Think you gotta just press the button once on the microphone.
Good.
There you go.
Julian Shepard, resident of the 5th district and Chair of York Commission for the Conservation of the Environment. I just wanted to do a very short introduction tonight to what we recommended. We sent all of your city councilors a two-page summary of our considerations, which we had considered over a couple of months, and actually as an appendix, sort of the major working paper which we were working with, which was about 15 pages long. But let me just summarize what we did. We, of course, considered the issues. We talked with the Public Works Department. We and we sort of considered three major issues, excuse me, three major solutions. And all of them involved sort of what we call pay-as-you-throw idea. And the idea of that is that the more garbage you make, the more waste you make, the more it costs you. And that's in the form, of course, of blue bags. We also sort of considered a citywide composting system, but we did defer that in view of the recent announcement of the the collaboration between cooperative extension vines and the city. So we, let me just outline what we recommended in sort of five recommendations. The first one was that we do think that, and by the way, all of these recommendations are kind of minor, and they don't involve huge amounts of budget or anything, but they're important. And one of them is, the first one that we thought was most important, was somehow subsidizing the less affluent parts of the community for the blue bags. There's quite a lot of complaint, and there actually was a published paper a few years ago about investigation in north of Maine area, which documented that there was quite a lot of litter made. And the excuse was that the blue bags were another cost for people with low income. The second sort of major issue we looked at was the stability of the blue bags. There's been a lot of sort of comments about how they're weak or they break. The Commissioner of Public Works didn't support that. He said they're relatively good. He actually had worked with them. And he says his people fairly uncommonly, sort of, I wouldn't say rarely, but uncommonly sort of have problems with broken bags. It seems to be largely because people overstuffed them or put sharp things in them. Third recommendation was that the sorry, I was just trying to reflect here. Third recommendation was, oh yes, that the city enforced the, which is on the books. I think it's, if I remember correctly, it's Article 350 of the ordinances, saying that landlords are responsible for the waste disposal property. We actually recommend that landlords be responsible for dispensing blue bags to their tenants. We don't see a problem with, of course, single occupied homes, owner-occupied homes, but they know they're responsible. But but those were sort of our major recommendations. And I please ask you to sort of look at them and see what you can do about them. And that's really all I have to say tonight.
Thank you so much. Welcome. Just state your name, whether you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
My name is Olomni Porter, former city councilman. I want to first congratulate Councilman Murray. Good job on winning the first award. Hopefully everything goes well and works fine. At least you have somewhat of a year under you, so you should be doing all right. Probably be more like than I was. So today, I'm going to be a little petty-pity for a moment. This is not to say for Councilwoman Rathmell and Murray. This is for, because me and Councilman Hotchkiss had spoke sometime back in May. And then this was basically on the ordinance of 024121. And it was on the ordinance of paying the mayor on his salary, raising it. And this was more, when I was explained, it was more of an incentive for the candidate that you had available that was supposed to win this election. Even so much that unfortunately for me and Councilwoman Middleton, we had a little bit of a heated debate behind it. Because like I then knew, I knew then, and it came to fruition, that the candidate, whoever you pick, was not going to win. And unfortunately, people's racism tends to conquer all. So, and now that you have done this, I don't know how y'all feel about that, that y'all are going to pay a man that I said back then to basically whip your ass the whole time. Put belt to you, belt to you. And I mean, y'all tried your best. God knows y'all tried your best to try to get him out of the office. But racism worked in his favor. I don't know. This is what I told Councilman Hotchkiss that I was going to do. And that was, I told you so. I wish this didn't happen. I was hoping that Miles would win. And I could have been wrong. But I knew. I knew my discernment weighed over because I knew how people act and how they behave. And yet they have not changed. Even when Kamala Harris was trying, Vice President Kamala Harris was running and she didn't win. I knew then, like I knew, like I know now, it changed. So I'm hoping y'all are still willing to resist and continue to resist. And I hope that none of you bend a knee like you would want. I mean, there's quite a few that I could think that maybe would, but I was just, you know, hope that there wouldn't. Again, I told you so. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Good to see you. Welcome. Please state your name and whether you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
Hi, everybody. My name is Andy Pregas. I live on the west side of Binghamton. I'm here today to, first of all, congratulate Carla Murray on her win in the first ward. I grew up in the ward. My family's lived there for a really long time. I spent a lot of my youth there, and it speaks very highly of the ward that they elected someone like you and they're lucky to have you. And I'm very proud and happy. Congratulations. I also came here today to thank Miles Burnett for standing up for when no one else would, for running the race that needed to be ran to make our city better. I worked on the campaign. I'm proud to have worked on the campaign. I'm proud to have worked with the campaign staff and many of you, well, all of you, and one way or another on the campaign and that effort. It's a sad day, but we didn't win, of course. But as I, as I kind of thought about throughout the day, we lost an election, but we, it was an organizing win. The campaign, the issues that were highlighted throughout the campaign, they aren't going anywhere, unfortunately. The proposals we put forth are still worthy. The proposals that we worked on with members of this council and had constant discussion with throughout the campaign, all of it is still worthy. And we, and for the next three years at very least, this council, or two years? Is it two years or three years? Two years, sorry, three years. This council has the opportunity to continue to push those things forward. I know you will, but today I'm here to encourage you to do just that. Beyond that, the campaign, the Miles Burnett campaign, it activated a lot of people in the city of Binghamton. And I think that the issues that we highlighted, you know, were, became central to people of Binghamton, especially housing. But it really changed the debate. And and there's a lot of folks, myself included, that worked on the campaign, who didn't work on the campaign, who were inspired by the campaign, who were, whose efforts were focused by the campaign that would gladly and willingly assist to work for you guys, to work with you guys, whatever you guys need. So I'm here today to offer my support for the council moving forward and helping to implement those important parts of the agenda. And I guess I'll end with just saying, you know, I think Miles left it all in the field. I think that, and I encourage everyone here at the council to do just that, so that we can build a better Binghamton for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Please state your name, whether you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
Hi, Tara Kabdelzam. I live and work in the city of Binghamton. Congratulations. It's good you're keeping the band together here, all seven of you. I wanted to, I'm not really going to talk much about the elections other than congratulating very fine candidate. I'm not big on congratulating those who wage attack campaigns that are based on lies. So just do the work. Save my commentary for later. Few things I wanted to ask about the agenda tonight. I saw the resolution regarding granting the mayor the authority to allocate 1.9 million of home ARP funds to various agencies, period. That is very vague, right? Did I misread that or did I get the wrong packet? Because I haven't seen a resolution that provides that much authority to the mayor in discretion. So I assume you all have talked about this and you know that. But I strongly hope that that gets resolved and there's some clarity to it. Also, I posted online, I think I've shared, and you have an expert here in the in the chamber regarding home funding, eligible uses. Home ARP is different, right? So some of the providers that you're working with, make sure they understand that. But home ARP also allows for funds to go to food pantries. And I would think maybe peeling some off, maybe of the Metro project. I love that Conant and Metro Interfaith and the team over there is getting into the production of affordable housing. They have not done it in decades. So it adds more capacity. I wish the mayor showed the same commitment to the Southern Door Community Land Trust that he has so quickly shown to an organization that hasn't gotten into construction in decades. But I support it. Whereas the mayor wouldn't unlock the ARPA dollars to Southern Door Community Land Trust until they got a certain amount. He's willing to spend 800,000 towards Metro. Just go, just do it, even though you don't have any of your other funding in place. Y'all get my point here, right? Pointing out some of the discrepancies and how certain agencies are treated as opposed to others. But maybe peel off 100, 200,000 and just put it in reserve. If the SNAP issue is resolved, release the funds. But at least we then have a little more kitty. I was just really disturbed that the only public agency in the whole county that had discretionary cash to deal with emergency food insecurity was the sheriff's office. That just troubles me. Who knows? I'm crazy, apparently. I will say this. You know, people bought the mayor's caricature of a competent, moderate manager, right? They bought the line that we should celebrate mediocrity as magnificence, press events that a street got paved, yay. I think this council is going to be so important the next two years that you're together and the next four years that the mayor's in office. This council together has already proven incredibly helpful to the community. You've already delivered for constituents that wouldn't have happened if it was up to the mayor alone. There's really no serious substantive policy discussion coming out of the fourth floor, right? But you all have already passed substantive policies. The pro-labor bill that Mike pushed, the good cause eviction, the proactive rental inspection licensing. These are critically important policies. I would encourage you to continue developing your policy agenda. I know you'll have people here that would support that. But rather than just, you know, narrowing this to responding to constituents, which was incredibly important, providing them information, yeah.
One minute.
Okay, thank you. But also putting forward a very robust policy agenda, right? I would also say please stay together. Doesn't mean you always have to agree, but it does mean that you treat each other with respect, with constant communication. The mayor is going to try to pick you off and pick you off. And someone's going to whisper in your ear, even you, right? And they're coming. They will do this. They'll continue to try to sow division among the seven of you. Again, you could disagree. But just please be the force that the city needs these next two years to deliver for the residents, because it's going to get ugly because of the federal decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything that was written?
From Chris Gilbert. I live on the south side of Binghamton and have recently learned of Richard Genakio's proposal for a three-stream disposal method for trash, recycling, and food scraps. I support this proposal because it is fair and would allow for the additional separation of food scraps from the trash stream. I would like to have my email of support read into the record during the next city council meeting on November 5th. Thank you very much for your assistance in conveying my support for this proposal to the meeting.
From George Holmesy. Dear Mayor Cram and City Councilmembers, I write to express my support for the composting and blue bag plan proposed by Richard Genakio of the city of Binghamton's Environmental Commission. Composting household biodegradable material, largely food scraps, would be an environmental, financial, and justice step as Binghamton wrestles with its solid waste. First, the proposal could become an important income generator for the city. Large producers of food waste in the region would be required to use the facility and, in fact, would likely jump at the chance if the composting option were priced cheaper than the landfill tipping fee. Second, the proposal would decrease greenhouse gas emissions from the landfill. The decomposition of food waste in the oxygen-free environment of a landfill produces methane gas, which is 80 times more potent as a greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. An October 2023 report from the US EPA found that 58% of landfill methane emissions come from food waste, and food waste generates 55 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent of methane every year. CO2 equivalent is how we measure greenhouse gases since each has different potency and lasts for different lengths of time in the atmosphere. It is all equated to CO2, the most abundant gas. While the total, excuse me, while the total methane emissions have decreased due to better landfill processing technology, the drop has slowed due to the increase in food waste, and it remains a major source of greenhouse gas emissions. Third, the provision of blue bags to families that receive SNAP benefits would reduce the cost of garbage disposal to households and could be paid for by the revenue generated by the composting enterprise, as well as the reduced amount paid by the city in landfill fees. My one change I would consider making to the plan is that food scraps only be placed for pickup in a covered bin, not a compostable bag, in order to reduce the risk of rodents. Many cities have now moved to putting trash, recycling, and composting in closed bins overall. Still, this plan would move the most appetizing portion of household solid waste from a bag of garbage into a container that is harder for rodents to access. A survey done by my students in 2021 indicated that almost 90% of Broom County residents, both renters and homeowners, would be willing to separate food scraps for composting. This plan takes important steps to better manage solid waste and does so in a way that helps make sure the poorest among us are not unduly burdened. I would be happy to answer any questions about my comments. Note that while I direct the Environmental Studies Program at Binghamton University, I write this note as an individual who has long worried about issues of sustainability. I do not and cannot speak for Binghamton University, the State University of New York System, or the state of New York. These comments are my own. Sincerely, George Holmesy.
Thank you. Was that all of them? Okay. That concludes our public comment period.
There was one that was, that I forwarded in. Sam, you are on the CC. It was Friday, October 24th. Yes.
He wants, okay. So there seem to be some instructions at the top for the VHA meeting. I'm guessing he wants me to skip that.
Yeah, it's an attached document that you're reading.
Yeah, but it says, "Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for..." Okay. "Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for being here today. Before we begin, I have a few housekeeping notes. Please sign in with your name, address, and whether you are a housing authority resident."
The instructions had you skip all that.
Okay.
That's within the email, the instructions.
Okay.
It's a copy of what was spoken at the meeting.
Okay. Sorry, just wasn't printed. As a board, we are bound by HUD regulations and carry the responsibility of keeping the housing authority running for all residents. And as a community, we also share responsibilities. One of the most important is paying rent. Currently, we are over $600,000 behind in rent payments. Those who choose not to pay are not hurting the federal government. They are hurting their neighbors and this community. Meanwhile, we have over 250 people on our waiting list who are ready and willing to pay. These are challenging times with cuts in the federal budget, increased costs for flood, fire, and liability insurance, rising inflation, and extraordinary legal bills from the eviction process. Our financial pressures are growing. When I joined this board, we were already in difficult financial straits. If we had faced emergencies like the floods of 2006 and 2011 or the tornado that damaged many buildings at Carlyle Apartments, we would not have had the resources to respond. Through careful management, we built a fund balance that has allowed us to both respond to emergencies and provide additional resources for residents. I also want to clarify, HUD does not allow us to forgive or reset past due rent. That is federal law. However, we have sent monthly notices that if your income changes, we will work with you to adjust your rent. For those on fixed rent, the process to move to an income-based payment plan takes time, but it is available. Once again, thank you for coming and for being engaged in this process. President John F. Kennedy once said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." I'd like to adapt that today. Ask not what your community can do for you, but what you can do for your community. And that's from Charles Kramer.
Thank you. Assume that's the last one. There's no others. Okay, so that concludes our public comment. And we can move on to reviewing the mayoral vetoes. There's none tonight. And we can move to second read legislation, which is introductory resolution R25-59, considered in planning with Councilmember Rathmell.
Thank you. I do not intend to make a motion, but this is introductory resolution R2559, an ordinance to support applications for New York State Homes Move-In New York program. The context for this, so this was held over after last week, or excuse me, two weeks ago, our last business meeting. We had pretty extensive conversation when it was first introduced, as well as during the last business meeting, particularly regarding... particularly regarding the language specifically as it identifies an approval, an endorsement of various applications to the Move-In New York program. What we raised, both during the work session and last business meeting, were concerns because we've not seen any proposals, we've not seen any applications, we're not aware of which local organizations are being referred to. We had explicitly asked to be informed regarding the applications that were being considered. We were told that this wouldn't be in support of applications, that this was needed simply for marketing purposes, and the language simply did not and still does not match that. And so I am certainly up for continued discussion and other thoughts from council members, but seeing no changes in the language as it is written, I remain not in support of moving this forward at this time.
I'm gonna echo those sentiments. The last conversation we had about this, you know, I stated on record that the language did not align with the presentation and the conversation. And so requesting that, you know, there would be some modification, and since there's not, I am also concerned about moving forward with this.
I just had a quick question. Did they, did they get the request for modifications? Like, was it sent to, I guess, it came from, it came from Sarah Gloss's department, correct?
Correct.
They didn't, they didn't make any modifications at all from the last?
We, we had that conversation with Sarah during the work session. It's my understanding that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but corp counsel, do you typically draft the, you draft them, okay, so we've, but you've received no requests to make modifications based on that on-record conversation?
Okay.
So.
Is there any way to get on the floor amendments to make it match what was presented to us in work session?
In terms of?
Like it being for marketing purposes as opposed to being for preapproval for the mayor to take action? Basically to reduce this back from actually giving authority to saying generally as a statement, council supports this concept. And, and that being, okay, the whole city, both the mayor's office and council supports the concept of this, but that we don't necessarily give blanket authority.
Um, I mean, you could potentially do that, but I'm not sure that. I think that runs into the same issue that Sarah brought up, which is that she was looking for this to be that preapproval. You know, you could always vote this down and put together a proposed revised version that goes in with the next meeting.
I think what was clear, excuse me, I, I think what was clear in our initial conversation, however, is that this is not necessary for her to pursue the marketing plan that she had intended or that she desired to pursue. This is very, I mean, this is what will need to be submitted to the state with these applications. This is the format that the state requires for when the applications are approved by city council and supported by the municipality. All of that, the language is accurate relative to the intention and expectations of this funding stream. But they're not accurate relative to how it was presented, and we have no list or I'd, it's not even open yet. The portal for these applications doesn't open until next week. And they can be received, submitted and received in January 2026. They won't be reviewed until then. Like, there is absolutely nothing except for what Director Gloss represented, that she may not move forward with pursuing organizations that would be potentially eligible, which is certainly her prerogative, but we don't, she doesn't need our authorization to do that. She can move forward as the director of her department to have conversations about the opportunity. This is a very different thing. We ultimately will be approving or considering at least a resolution that is largely identical because it's required as part of the grant program. But I remain uncomfortable doing that when we don't know what we're actually supporting.
Can I just offer to your point, Councilmember Matavatsky, the language in this bill is the language to Councilmember Rathmo's point that is required by the state. So it's, if we alter the language of the bill, it's an entirely different bill than what Sarah is asking, or as I understand, than what Director Gloss is asking to be passed. So it's directly copied from the grant application.
So to make sure, just as far as point of order or protocol, if we were to vote this down tonight, when we do, again, that doesn't at all restrict or prohibit Director Gloss from still moving forward to connect with agencies. And when there are proposals and applications to consider, this can be resubmitted for our approval.
Yes. Or if council wants to reword this resolution in some other way, council can also reintroduce it and vote on it. So I'm, I'm in favor of putting this to a vote. Then if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then it can be reworked and reintroduced. So does anybody want to make a motion?
I, I would say, I, I feel the same way as you do, but I do think that maybe a kind of what Lawyer Bob said, kind of rewording it and then instead of, instead of bringing it to a vote, kind of rewording it and then if need, council does their own separate thing.
My misunderstanding, I thought you just mentioned that it cannot be reworded because the language that currently exists comes directly from the application. So can someone clarify for me if there is an opportunity to reword the language or if we just have to vote on as is?
So for the state's purposes, this is their form resolution that they want with an application. If council wanted to pass a resolution saying, you know, we're in favor of this type of thing happening and to receive applications and to move forward with them, they could do that without it sort of being the, we're agreeing to this full state resolution. That was the, the alternative that I think Councilwoman Matavatsky was floating.
Yeah, I would say that, similar to other things that we've voted on where there's no kind of legal consequence to, that we can, we can show as a body that we overall support the principles of this work, you know, of housing and all of this and say that, you know, we're generally in favor, but we, we do, we do want to, we're not doing it in the format that actually gives some sort of legal authority from that. But something that Director Gloss would have when she's going and approaching people to say, "Our, our council is on board. They are also pro-housing." Everyone, you know, that, that we are a good community to come in and, and do this with.
And the, the issue is, I mean, they're all, I don't want to speak for anyone else, right? I don't think the concern is anyone not being pro-housing. I think the, the language that's stated here is quite concerning. Right?
I mean, I'm thinking about like Almyra, right? Like, isn't there a lawsuit going on in Almyra because there might have, I have no idea. But the, the news headlines relating to housing there, there, there are communities in upstate New York where it is at least not clear that their governments are on board for housing. It's not generally kind of.
Was this done, and I wasn't, I don't recall if I was here prior to, this, this hasn't been the protocol with grants typically where there's an authorization to, like this, I don't remember council having to vote to support block by block, for example, before it was released by the mayor's office as, and to media as something that was being pursued. So the, it, it, one, it's not, I would, I would say, in my opinion, not at all necessary. And again, there's nothing restricting Director Gloss from doing her job and making those connections and having conversations with organizations that might be interested in pursuing this. Like, there's absolutely nothing standing in the way.
Just, I don't want to speak for Director Gloss, but again, typically when Sarah sends down these RLs, it is because she needs the language to be exactly what is included in the RL because it is what the state requires. So just to Corporation Counsel's point, you could pass two bills, one saying we support X, but you will eventually have to get to this place, like you. So I don't know that Director Gloss would support you just issuing another bill that's just symbolic in nature because Director Gloss is specifically looking for the language of this bill. That would be a discussion with her. I just want to be really clear about that because she's very thorough and, yeah.
So I'm gonna make the motion to adopt introductory resolution R25-59. Is there a second?
Sure, second.
Okay, motion, second. Is there any discussion?
I mean, I guess I would be, well, first I want to hear from someone who hasn't spoken.
I mean, since it doesn't seem to be an appetite to pass this, I would prefer actually that we didn't have a vote that's against authorizing.
Didn't we hold it over? Don't we have to?
We can essentially remove your name. Nobody moves to pass it. It doesn't move. Right, just?
I mean, you can't really, like, it's on the floor. You can't really remove your name at this point.
We, we've got a motion and a second, don't we?
Yep.
What? What? No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, we got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
Clear that I would be interested in having the, the two-part resolution where we have one that is not the legal language generally supporting this and then have the version needed when the applications are, are in. So.
Makes sense to have two? I don't, I'm not sure. I don't think it would.
If it seems like we're about to vote this down, then we certainly want something that says that we actually support this because that's gonna be very confusing.
But again, that's not been protocol. Like, there's nothing stopping Sarah from moving forward with having conversations with potential applicants for this procurement opportunity. There's, she, like, this wasn't a, a piece that had to, it didn't happen with block by block. It's not happened with other, like, we pursue a lot of state funding. This eventually will come back in a format that we can discuss and have an informed conversation regarding the organizations themselves and the applications they intend to submit. We've communicated with Director Gloss that we support, that, I mean, there's not a member that's not pro-housing. We're a pro-housing community. I think we've all heard Mayor Cram say that over and over and over and over again. And so there's nothing stopping her from representing from the administration standpoint that this municipality is willing to support this. And we've communicated the same. It, it just seems like an unnecessary, I mean, originally, this felt very much like it was, I mean, we're past the election at this point, but it felt like it was put in place so that then a press release could be issued. That's all behind us now. Uh, but still, there was no consideration given to the concerns that were raised and the language hasn't changed.
So I, I, I think this is a for the record, I think this is a program that is interesting and would be appropriate in certain parts of the city, not necessarily all of them. So I don't want to just kind of do this, feels like a blanket authority, and I'd rather look at projects individually. That's, that's where I'm at. Any other, any other thoughts? Okay, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Murray. Sorry.
I can start.
Okay, Councilmember Rathmo?
No.
Councilmember Matavatsky?
No.
Council President Proton Pachkas?
No.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
No.
Councilmember Middleton?
No.
Councilmember Murray?
No.
Thank you. That is six zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to first read legislation. We have introductory ordinance O25-66, considered in finance with council member Kavanaugh.
Okay. I'd like to motion to pass O2566, an ordinance to amend the 2024 Home ARP budget.
I'll second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Sorry.
So this is the step to consolidate funds before granting them. That's it essentially.
Do you want to combine discussion? Let me look at the resolution. For R2560, just like doing a rundown of the, would that be helpful?
I think we should just do one at a time. So, I mean, they're, they're related, of course. But this specifically is just consolidating the funding. Right?
Correct.
Comfortable with making that step, and then we can talk about any other changes to the other resolution. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Hi.
Councilmember Matavatsky?
Hi.
Council President Proton Pachkas?
Hi.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Hi.
Hi.
Councilmember Murray?
Hi.
Thank you. That is six zero.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to introductory ordinance O25-71, considered in finance with council member Kavanaugh.
So this was discussed on Monday. We're, we're filling in budget holes having to do with, as the chief had discussed, some extra uniform costs. Electricity, which of course has been killing us across the board. Firefighter had to go through additional paramedic training and the unfortunate expensive vehicle repairs that the chief detailed on Monday for us. So we are plugging that hole or those set of holes, I'm afraid.
Any other discussion?
Oh. Oh, right. Oh, sorry. That was my fault. There's the motion. All right, now pretend I'm having all the discussions that I just had. Thank you.
Discussion and the other discussion. Okay, seeing none, the clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Rathmo?
Hi.
Councilmember Matavatsky?
Hi.
Council President Proton Pachkas?
Hi.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Hi.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Hi.
Thank you. That is six zero.
Good, now we're moving on to introductory resolution R25-60, considered in planning with council member Rathmo.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adopt R2560, an ordinance to enter into an agreement with various agencies for home ARP funds.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion?
Yep, so for context, this was again, Yep, so for context, this was again, a request that we had significant discussion regarding primarily the concerns that I raised from the beginning and as was mentioned during public comment this evening. The HUD home funding program and the HUD home ARP program are two different programs. And the proposals that were submitted were reflective of the eligibility criteria and qualifying populations under HUD home and not under ARP. So what we asked for in our discussion was the opportunity to connect to the executive directors of the agencies who had submitted applications to ensure that they were clear and had a comprehensive understanding regarding the qualifying populations that funds awarded through home ARP could serve and the intent of the home ARP program, as well as the limitations when it comes to referrals made. And I want to just read through, not word for word, but I did have extensive conversations with each executive director. They confirmed that they were not aware of the differences or the specific eligibility criteria. And said they would take a look at their proposals, just to me, they all committed to and confirmed that they were just as concerned about maintaining compliance with HUD as council is. So in response, after I asked them to take a look at the eligibility criteria and consider whether their proposals could be adjusted to maintain compliance. Jennifer Lesko, who's the executive director of the Broom County Urban League, sent a message back that said very specifically she made some changes to the populations that served within their proposals to meet the qualifying population criteria. She then confirmed that they'll follow protocol and receive referrals from coordinated entry. And as identified through the Office of Planning and Community Development, they are going to use the City of Binghamton's affirmative marketing and outreach plan for the home project, which is allowable if they don't have their own. So she did a pretty thorough re-review and responded to indicate all of the changes that they would prioritize. Same with Jerry Willard, Executive Director at First Ward Action Council. He discussed the requirements with the consultant that put the proposal together. His consultant identified the changes that would need to be made as far as seventy percent of the units being targeted to extremely low and very low income households. So they adjusted their numbers a bit, not the overall ask. There's no substantive changes that would impact the numbers. And they have their own affirmative fair housing marketing plan that they'll be using. Also spoke with Conan, I, and I, and I've shared this somewhat. So Conan, who's the executive director from Metro Interfaith, responded simply to say that he's confident they'll meet the requirements necessary for the whole MRP grant program. In my opinion, their program is the most challenging to adjust to match the eligibility criteria, particularly because they set their numbers and their sites on low and moderate income households as opposed to extremely low income and very low income. And there's a discrepancy there between what they could recoup in rent. But, I mean, his one-line response that said he's confident they will meet the requirements necessary for the whole MRP program. I think at the very least, we've done our due diligence in ensuring they understand what compliance needs to look like.
Thank you for doing all the background work and informing the proposed recipients. I do think that the resolution should have the, the people, the organizations listed in that file. What just brought up.
I agree. I was gonna make the same comment, I think.
Right, and I don't, I don't have the number.
We have very specific. It went to the RP process, we have specific organizations and specific amounts, but yes, I would prefer that they were, for future reference, this sort of thing is listed in the resolutions. I, I don't know why.
Can we amend it on the floor to me?
If anyone has all those stuff handy.
I mean, we've, can we do organization and amount?
Yeah, I think it would be sufficient.
So, oh, tell me to read them off or?
So, yeah, it would be to, I would motion to amend. Let's see.
You could do it as a new whereas clause. Second whereas clause.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, so I would motion to amend. Had a second whereas clause, uh, reading. Let's see.
You could do it.
In the resolve part, man, the city of Binghamton has any here authorized twenty-two hundred agreements with the three organizations and the amounts. Does that work? Is that simple enough?
Do you mind reading this through?
So, uh, first one will be to Metro Interfaith, excuse me, to Metro Interfaith for the one oh nine Oak Street Rehab Project in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars. The second will be to First Ward Action Council for the Gateway Project in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars. And the third will be to the Broom County Urban League for the Housing Services Project in the amount of two hundred five thousand dollars, five hundred, excuse me, two hundred five thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second to mine?
So we have a motion and, motion to amend and a second. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Well, the only thing I would add is that there is the, there's any consideration to all this for food pantry. Monies.
I, yeah, I mean, I think, and I guess the question would be reducing for First Ward Action Council's project. They are running up against deadlines because of the other funding streams they've braided in to support this project. So I think that, I do think it's critical that we move the funds forward for their project. When it comes to Broom County Urban League, it's a tenant-based rental assistance program that is just as critical to release to families. I would not be opposed. I'm just not quite sure how to, I mean, it would be another amendment. I don't know if it impacts the one earlier in terms of the consolidation of funds. What was mentioned in public comment is accurate. The, you know, funds to food pantries can be supported by home ARP dollars. And I don't, I mean, there was no mention in my conversations with Conan about, I mean, there's still a lot of, a lot that needs to be done on that, putting that Oak Street project together. I, Councilmember Kavanaugh, I don't know if, if you have any timelines or deadlines that you would represent relative to that project.
They, I mean, they have the building, they have site control, and this would allow them to do, uh, start doing things that would be neighborhood-wise beneficial as far as securing the site, cleaning up the exterior and stuff. So there, there are reasons to move this funding. To give them a jumpstart on those aspects of it. It doesn't necessarily speed up the total completion, but does speed up the, the kind of neighborhood impact. I, I. I mean, I, I, there's a crisis in, you know, kind of in the moment, but I, I kind of viewed these funds as more of a, we're, we're funds that are there to start addressing long-term projects. And we, we've already, you know, the, the tenant assistance is already kind of addressing a stopgap, immediate need with a chunk of this funding. And I think we're not going to get a lot more dollars like this that can be easily devoted to long-term stuff. And I think if, if the snap crisis continues, I mean, I, first of all, there's, there's a lot of folks in the community which is step, who are stepping up in extraordinary ways, which is amazing. We have movement on the federal level as far as at least partial funding for this month, I, I think. I, I wouldn't, my personally, I would not like to derail these projects for something that's, that's, I don't know that we'll even be able to get this funding out the door before the crisis is resolved. So, that's my take.
Yeah, I'm, I just wanted to put it forward because it was brought up. I also think we should probably just move forward with this amendment as it is and do what we can to find other funding sources to support food pantries or any other type of food, food assistance. Councilwoman Middleton, I'm curious enough. You, you being in the food insecurity world more deeply than all of us. Do you have any input? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Okay, um, I mean, right, right now, um, in my world, people are really struggling. There's, and I'll talk about it in my closing statements, but right now, we're handing out boxes at the store, like pantry boxes, and it's a real, it's a real uptick. People are, um, they're in need, but also I guess some people are getting like some of their benefits. So it's like fifteen dollars of their like benefits. So I guess some people saying they're receiving them, but long story short, it's a, it's an uptick and um, it's a problem. So that's just kind of where I'm at. That's, but yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so any other discussion on the amendment? As it is? Can we take the role, role please?
Councilmember Rathma.
Hi.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Hi.
Council President Proton Pachkas.
Hi.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Councilmember Middleton, Councilmember Murray.
Hi.
Thank you. That is six zero on the amendment.
Okay, can I get a motion to pass the?
I'll second.
Yeah, as amended. Motion to pass the resolution as amended.
I will motion to pass resolution R twenty-five sixty as amended.
And I'll second.
Motion a second, any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Rathma.
Hi.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Hi.
Councilmember, Council President Proton Pachkas.
Hi.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Murray. Thank you. That is six zero.
Thank you. Move on to introductory resolution R twenty-five dash sixty-three, considered in public works and parks with Councilmember Murray. Want to introduce that one?
So, um, this is introductory resolution R twenty-five sixty-three. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt R twenty-five sixty-three, which is a resolution to enter into supplemental agreement number six with the Barton. And how do you say that? I can't see it.
The Judas.
Thank you very much, the Judas. For DECO project.
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion a second, is there any discussion? For some explanation, this is update to scope of work for the Deco District Phase Two that's happening on Washington Street, Henry Street and I want to say Water Street also, but there's, uh, made some updates to accommodate the needs of businesses, the area. And that's what this is representing. Any other discussion? Okay, will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Rathma.
Hi.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Hi.
Council President Proton Pachkas.
Hi.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Murray. Thank you. That is six zero.
Moving on to introductory resolution R twenty-five dash sixty-four, considered in public works and parks, again with Councilmember Murray.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution R twenty-five sixty-four, which is a resolution to authorize supplemental agreement number four with Barton and the Judas.
Can you say that for me one more time? Did I say it correctly?
Yeah, the Judas.
Oh, I did get it right. Okay, the Judas for a six ward interceptor project.
Motion and second. Do you have any discussion? So this, this is just an ongoing project for the six ward interceptor project that is began in twenty seventeen and updating, updating the project to cover more services that need to be rendered. That's all. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Rathma.
Hi.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Hi.
Council President Proton Pachkas.
Hi.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Murray. Thank you. That is six zero.
Move on to introductory resolution R twenty-five dash sixty-five, considered in planning with Councilmember Rathma.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt our twenty-five sixty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with environmental design and research for construction administrative services for the Ross Park Carousel Restoration Project.
Oh, sorry, that's your district. I'll take that.
Motion by Councilmember Rathma, second by Councilmember Matavetsky. Is there any discussion?
Uh, so we, we'd already authorized the, the funds for this. This is just the, the actual contract with EDR for this. And if anyone's paying attention, there's been some photos circulating of the, the pad and the enclosure going up at, at Ross Park and fingers crossed that the actual carousel rest, installation part will be proceeding on time.
Any other discussion?
Reminding people that I'll be advocating for money to have a Christmas carousel rides. If it, if the timeline stays on track.
It's, so it, I mean, it, it's, that's what the Parks Department is planning on that already, so.
You just won't have horses or anything. At Rec Park.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Rathma.
Hi.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Hi.
Council President Proton Pachkas.
Hi.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Murray.
Hi.
Thank you. That is six zero.
Moving on to introductory resolution R twenty-five dash sixty-six, considered in municipal and public affairs with Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, President Proton Pachkas. I'd like to make a motion for RL twenty-five dash sixty-six, a resolution to accept the tree donation from the Sunny Hill Tree Farm.
Motion. Got a motion and a second by Councilmember Matavetsky. Is there any discussion?
So, yes, so this is, uh, the City of Binghamton. We're accepting a cut tree with the value of three hundred dollars from Sunny Tree Farm to be installed at the Washington, Washington, I can't say it today, I guess for some reason, the annual tree lighting ceremony. So this is the tree that they're going to use for that.
Thank you. Uh, the only other thing I would add is there used to be, used to, they had the whole root ball and then they would plant it and they did that twice at Rec Park. And these are just going to be a cut tree. And they're more affordable, but don't get to plant them in our parks afterwards, so.
I did want to say that, um, Director Gloss did get back to us with information about the Hanukkah celebrations and reefs and bows and all of the topics from work session.
Thank you. For the record, it's ornaments and pine cones.
I like that.
Okay, any other discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Rathma.
Hi.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Hi.
Council President Proton Pachkas.
Hi.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Murray.
Hi.
Thank you. That is six zero.
Moving on to introductory resolution R twenty-five dash sixty-seven, considered in municipal and public affairs with Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Pachkas. Uh, I'd like to make a motion for introductory twenty-five dash sixty-seven, a resolution to accept the in-kind donation from Greenlight Networks.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Oh, yes, so, um, the City of Binghamton would like to accept a donate, an in-kind donation. Not to exceed five thousand. Uh, not to exceed five thousand dollars from Green Light Networks to support the tree lighting ceremony, I think they, they did this last year. Um, and it's gonna include the lights for the tree, the installation, maintenance and teardown. And a promotion of the event with uh, Fox forty. I guess that'll be, it says to be discussed, but that's just basically what this is for, so yeah.
Any other discussion? Thank you, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rathmel.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky. Council President Protem Pachkas.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Thank you, that is six zero.
Um, next we have introductory resolution R twenty five dash sixty seven, considered in municipal and public affairs, Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, I'd like to make a most, make a motion for twenty five dash sixty eight, a resolution to authorize free parking for the holiday season.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, so this is a resolution for free parking um, at the municipal ramps uh, and the dates are eleven twenty five, twelve six. Twelve thirteen and twelve twenty, um, it's waiving the fees at all metered ramps. And water, in lots, Water Street, State Street, Holly Street, Collier Street and four Saturdays. The, the Saturdays that I stated to encourage business patronage during the holiday sea, during, during the holiday shopping season.
Any other discussion?
Um. I brought up a point during the work session um, that especially if we're going to be doing these types of things frequently. Um, and the cumulative cost is going to be high, that it would be. I think worth a discussion with downtown businesses to think about whether or not this like. Rather than doing these things as like one offs, um, having some sort of a budget set aside for. Um, downtown related economic development things and um. Making sure that parking is in fact what they would. Want to prioritize, which it very well could be, but um. As opposed, you know, because we're now, we're between this and the other one, we do another one, you know, multiple times a year. You know, we could be around ten thousand dollars or uh, or seven thousand or eight thousand dollars. Um, to just make sure this is the biggest thing for the buck for our downtown. Um, businesses.
Makes, makes sense to get more feedback about.
If you're gonna get something for free, you're gonna say yes, but if you have to actually think about. What you want the most, it's, and you have to prioritize that. That makes sense.
Any other.
I'm not against the free parking resolution.
You're not again. I, and this is specifically uh, just for the ramps. As opposed to the one that we did earlier in the summer that included on-street parking, so I think. Right now, I, I, at least.
Oh, um, I, and not to get petty, but um, the signage. For this, once the free parking goes up, I don't know if anyone else noticed the free parking signage. Uh, it should state from the city of Binghamton or from the mayor and city council. Um. I, I think that that's uh, fair.
Yeah. It feels like there's a whole bunch of stuff then that would. That, I mean, every press release would then be changed, interesting thought, Hadassah.
Can't work without us.
All right, any, any other discussion on this resolution specifically related to parking? Okay. Seeing none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Rathmel.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Council President Protem Pachkas.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Thank you, that is six zero.
Good, thank you, uh, we can move on to a discussion of our annual meeting schedule. Um, I hope all of you have a calendar in front of you. Of the proposed schedule. Do we need to adopt this? Okay. Anyone?
My calendar.
Yeah.
So not actually physically on this copy, right, is the organization meetings actually on the ninth, that, that, right? So.
At least not be able to attend April eighth for Passover. Doesn't mean that we have to move the meeting, just throwing it out there that. Everyone else, you know, needs to be at least in a quorum to have that meeting.
Any other comments on this?
Hi, Aaron.
Were those words, Councilmember?
Oh, it's, it's weird that there's only one meeting in October. And three in July. But that's just how the weeks fall. Um, I, I don't have any proposed change at the moment, I guess. I mean, no.
Was that because of the budget? Budget season? Is that because of budget season? No, just.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
Believe something similar happened this year in August. Uh, where there were three meetings in one month and then. It wasn't quite one, but it, it was all the way toward the end of the month, so.
Do.
It, it just happens that way because of federal holidays sometimes.
Do we want to? Consider having. For example, like Fourth of July week off or, oh, you know. Oh. A summer. Break. I don't know if that's, if there's any history on doing that, but.
No, I am envious of.
It's gonna be challenging to get quorum around a particular holiday week or something.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. Um, I would say, I would say maybe yes, because it's hard to get quorum around that time. Not because of a break, but just so that we, we have quorum, it's hard, like if people are making plans. And, and to be honest, like, I don't really think any business is really conducted around that time, I'm not sure, don't quote me, I'm just.
I mean, we can always have a special business meeting if there's something.
Something that comes up, yeah, but around that time, I'm sorry, around that time, it's kind of hard to get everyone like together and to get quorum around that time.
And there are two other meetings scheduled for the month.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Do I need to motion that line to say that I'm proposing cancelling the meeting on the June twenty ninth and the meeting on July first?
Yeah, why not?
Sure.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to cancel.
Just straight cancelling it and then with the knowledge that as always, our. Council president can deal with any emerging business as needed.
You know, I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is to remove June twenty ninth work session and the July first business meeting. Uh. The motion discussion. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Rathmel.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Council President Protem Pachkas.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Oh, there.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Thank you, that is six zero.
Is there any interest in adding? Meeting in October, fifth and the seventh. There would be two weeks in a row we're having, I, I don't know, it seems like a lot of time to not have.
I think we're, I mean, I, I know that it wouldn't be work session or business, but we'll have several budget hearings that we're going through during October. So to me, the one, I mean, there will be no shortage of us being around this table. If we need to discuss a special business meeting for any reason, we, we can, but I would say I don't, I'm not particularly interested in adding.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think that's right, we're all gonna be here for a quorum for budget if there's important business to move. We can schedule a special business meeting immediately before. Did we like the start time of five PM for the budget hearings? And six PM for regular meetings?
I think most people had. Pos- those positive feedback about that, so they weren't. They were, department head, they weren't, there wasn't a break for an hour that they. And it goes late, doesn't go as late. I think that's kind of what I heard. Felt better this year than last.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
I won't commit to being here exactly at five, depending on childcare. Um. It's challenging to do the handoff in that window, but uh, mostly navigated it this year, but. Just will state that. Probably at least one of those meetings. My husband will also have to work a meeting with that number and therefore the childcare handoff will be sloppy.
Just to clarify, you can always change the time of a meeting, not having to adopt a new calendar or change the calendar.
I, again, I'm, I'm not arguing against the five PM at all, I'm just. Making sure that it's clear for people who are thinking about quorum, that it is reasonable that I may be. A little bit late to a meeting starting at five. Because of childcare handoff.
Anything else?
So we want to leave it at, is or do we want to consider five thirty?
It definitely that time, I guess we'll, we'll go when that time comes.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, it sounds like overall the feedback was positive for five, I'm, I'm just, if other. I'm just throwing it out there that. I'm comfortable with the meeting starting without me, but I don't want that to be a problem for quorum.
Do we need a motion to adopt?
Oh.
I mean.
As amended.
I. There's also no meeting the last week of the year. Does anyone have an issue, I mean, we, we only have twenty-three meetings scheduled all year instead of, I mean, fifty-two, it would be so far six.
So far we don't. I think we usually always add extra meetings. Start. I'm certain there'll be a point sometime in this year that we'll have to add extra meetings for something or other.
And uh, conceivably in those areas where um. Where there's the longer gaps, we can be kinder and more generous relating to expediting.
Hmm.
Less meetings and things have to get pushed on.
Just in case if we have anything. Yep.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the calendar as amended.
I'm gonna second.
Motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rathmel.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Council President Protem Pachkas.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Thank you, that is six zero.
Move on to communications from council and we will start with Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, um, firstly, I would like to thank uh, First Ward residents for their support and their votes. Um, I am honored to be able to continue to uh, represent and advocate for District One. Um, residents and to continue to serve on council and I also want to say a big thank you to my fellow council members for your support. Throughout this process and um, you know, just the efforts from everyone who knocked on doors um. And uh, supported me in this journey, so thank you very much, um. There will be no uh, Neighborhood Watch uh, meeting at the senior center. Um, due to Veterans Day, uh, the next meeting is scheduled for December ninth and as usual, I just want to encourage. First Ward residents to attend those meetings, to share um, any questions, concerns. Um, or their experience um, with uh, the group, they are very active. And um, those meeting minutes are available if they are unable to attend and so I just want to continue to encourage folks to attend. And also reach out to me with any um, concerns or issues that are coming up that's impacting um, your household, your family, your community, thank you.
Thank you, can move on to Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, um, first I want to say congratulations, Carla. I feel honored, I, I am, I think about when I called Carla um. In February and I was like, hey girl, it was like a random call, I'm like, uh, I need a favor and she's, she's like, alright. And I spoke to her about kind of um, what it would be like to join us on council. And uh, I didn't give Carla a lot of time, I, I was like, girl, you gotta do this like, right away, like, we need you. Soon, and you're like, oh, okay. And um. You decided to come on, I'm excited to have you here and, but just through the process, like you were learning. Running and still dealing with like personal issues and to me and family things and you know, with your, with your brother passing. To me, that just shows like what type of person you are, how resilient and even through those challenges of learning this new job. Coming right on unexpectedly and dealing with those things and running a campaign, you did that, girl, so. So happy for you, so I, I'm excited that you're here permanently, um. So thank you for that and thank you for your service, uh, I wanted to say uh, thank you to Miles Burnett for running, um. I think just running a campaign and being a person on the campaign trail, it is extremely hard. You are judged by people every single day that don't even know you or they hear something and they think this, that you're this type of person. I mean, to me, that is always kind of like. Put me at bay when, you know, people are like, you should do this, and I'm like, heck no, like, I don't want to like, put my daughters and my family at, you know. In those spaces because they don't deserve that, um, but thank you, Miles, for running. And even though it wasn't the result that you, you want, you wanted and what we, uh, certain people wanted here, you, you did that with grace. And you were, you still um, were kind and you still ran the race even when you felt like you were being defeated. Uh, and that to me shows a testament of your true character and I hope that in future races. That we start to kind of the, the, and what we need to focus on in future races as policy. And what you plan to do and how you plan to implement it, not all of these negative things, like it's, and on both sides. Um, not the negative things because all of us are human, we're learning every single day. I, if you honestly judged me when I was young or maybe even before I was in politics, you'd probably say I was a lunatic. But um, I, I think we need to get back to um, and just in, in politics in general, get back to who has the better policy. Um, how you can help the city of Binghamton or the state or whatever county, whatever seat you run for. How can you do that effectively and I do hope that one day we get back to that instead of um, the names and the mudslinging. Because to me that. We, you won't be able to find people to step up and put their lives on, at state in their, their whole. Um. You know, life, you know, out there if we continue um, in politics that way, uh. On to, two more things and then I'm done, um. I think Nate kind of caught, caught me off guard with the food insecurity thing, but uh, just a testament to that, we know that the government is still shut down. And this is the new month of November and people usually start to receive their SNAP benefits on Nov- on November first. We are now at, what are we at, November uh, fifth and so people are starting to really, really set in, in a reality to some people. Um, even though. really set in in a reality to some people. Um, even though people, you you get probably two hundred dollars a month or three hundred a month that still does not um cover a household or a family for that amount, so a lot of the times people are still struggling at the end of the month just to make ends meet. Now they do not have that and um it's it's a very sad situation. I do hope that we come to some type of agreement because I do not see this getting better if we don't, and like I said in our last, in our last closing comment that um other things happen when people don't have the haves, so when you don't so if when you don't have certain things and things that you need to have quality of life, then other issues happen and other things happen, but I do hope that we um get to some type of agreement or something in our in our federal, in the federal uh government because we are going to really suffer, especially in Binghamton with already having a low poverty rate. Um, I would encourage everyone here, um, you know, I've been, I've been thinking about some things that I want to do and I'll talk with you guys about it, but um I would encourage everyone here, if you have anything extra, you know, money, I think, you know, we all might have some food in our cabinet, but the food banks right now need money, so if you could donate, you know, a little bit, five dollars, ten dollars, whatever you can, if you can help out at pantries if you want to come help out at the store, like, just reach out to me because right now with the holidays coming, this is a very vulnerable time for America and for the city of Binghamton. Also, I was it last week, the week before, we had our neighborhood meeting, it was really good. Um, we are starting some committees and some things that we kind of want to accomplish inside on the west side of Binghamton, so I encourage everyone to come out to our next one, it's November twentieth, and I'll talk about it at our next meeting. Thank you, and I'm gonna shut up, sorry.
Well, thank you so much for sharing. Councilmember Kavanaugh. And Councilmember Rathmo, let's do Councilmember Madavetsky, we're going in number order.
Hey. Um, let's see, first, congratulations, Councilwoman Murray, uh, we're excited to keep you with us. Um. With the election, South Side, um, I was uh really happy to see the large turnout, I had to wait in a line for the long, for the first time in a long time, so um I appreciate City of Binghamton turning out. Um, it was great to see neighbors and connect with people and um yeah, I I don't remember the last time I waited in the line to vote. Um. My kid, my kids were were excited to come vote with me and uh and they're like, oh, this is such a big line, and I had to remind them, I'm like you know, some people wait in hours-long but lines to vote and that we should be really uh, you know, grateful um both for the turnout and for the quick turnover of the long line. Um, so thank you to our poll workers who are out um keeping democracy alive. Um. Recently, uh, I went to the press conference to get ready for the hometown heroes banner uh banners which are going up really soon. I know some of us are going on Thursday for the um the event relating to that. Um, I was excited while I was there to actually connect with a fifth district resident who's getting a banner up. Um, so make sure you um go and check those out, they're gonna be up um kind of over on the um Hudson Angle Park kind of side of town. Um, and uh, speaking of our veterans, Veterans Day is coming up and Discovery Center will have Veterans Day celebration with activities related to Veterans Day. Has anyone heard about the Veterans Day Parade? Is that happening? I don't, it is? Okay, I.
Yeah, the county submitted an event permit, so the county hosts the parade, so all the information will be on the county's website.
Okay, um, so I, depending on when that is, I will uh try to uh attend, I am working in the morning now. Thank you, uh, thank you to our veterans.
Thank you, and Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you, I think just briefly regarding the mayoral race, the reality of yesterday is that only about ten percent of adult residents within the city turned out to reelect our current mayor. Uh, ten percent, so that's democratic only in the sense that among the total twenty percent of residents who actually cast a ballot, our current mayor got the majority of that vote. That's not actually democracy and that's far from representation, so one of the things that that compels me which I think many of us were compelled by when we ran, but but I remain committed to engaging with residents in a way that they feel represented, they feel like they can come out and impact decisions that uh affect their daily lives. Um, because where we saw some higher turnout in the First Ward, we saw some higher turnout for uh the council race, again, the executive seat for our city was decided by ten percent of the total population. Um, the the final two things, just a reminder that we are having our second proactive code town hall on Monday in these council chambers at six P M. Um, we incorporated as many of the recommendations that we received into the second draft, so I look forward to sharing about those adjustments that were made and hearing any additional feedback. Um. And then just broadly, uh, for about a month now, for any constituents listening, I have not had a council phone, so my apologies if you've attempted to leave me a voicemail or get in touch. Uh, it is my understanding that I T. Is all set to go, but purchasing is not yet uh actually acquired the phone, so I don't have a timeline yet for when that will. Uh, so my apologies if it seems I've been difficult to reach, I have been unable. Oh, oh, awesome, you can call the clerk's office and they will forward uh your concerns to me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. Congratulations to Councilmember Murray on your election. Thank you for for running. Um, thank you, everyone, for running. I think it's important part of our democracy and how how we chose to run this country, that everybody uh we have candidates and we have people that vote and are engaged in the process and I wish there was more engagement and there is more civic. It's, sometimes it's it's kind of a bummer that there's only like a couple people that we we recognize that come in these chambers and and comment here. Um, it'd be awesome if there's more, I wish there is more more voting. Um. Think I want to withhold any other comments on the election until I talk to some folks. Um. There is a Northside Neighborhood Assembly meeting tomorrow at six um at the four thirty-eight Shenango Street, the Centenary Church. Um, that's another way to be engaged, so I hope people show up to that. Uh, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Motion, but second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.